Morning. I would like to call the LRA meeting to order. I'm Calvin Arnold, the LRA chairman. On behalf of myself, fellow commissioners, emerors of the City of St. Louis, the Comptroller's Office, the St. Louis Board of Education, Neil Richardson, Shelton Anderson, the employees of LRA, we welcome you. First of all, I want to acknowledge our newest member, Mr. Tracy Hikes, a new commissioner. It is a job of the LRA to redevelop properties to residents and developers that have the financial ability and expertise to redevelop such properties to get them back to the tax roll. In a few moments, we will start our procedures listed on the agenda for today. If you have any, if we have anyone that has been signed up to speak on behalf of their offer, you will be given that chance. But please limit your presentations to three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, the meeting has been called to order. And I'd like to make a motion. Our minutes were presented to us in the mail. And I asked for a motion to approve the minutes of the July 31st meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. I'd like to call for the vote.
Commissioner Arnold?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Hikes?
Yes.
Hearing no objections, motion carries.
You have any?
Report.
Do you have any reports from the commissioners?
No report.
The next item on the agenda is actually the election.
Okay, election. All right. As our chair mentioned, we have a new commissioner. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we elect, or we have an election here of our new commissioner, Tracy Hikes, as secretary. So I nominate Tracy Hikes to be our secretary. So I vote yes.
Yes.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay, all right. So it's been moved in second. All those in favor? And I think we said both yes. So welcome, Tracy.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, with that, there's been no report of the commissioners. So at this time, we will move forward with anyone in the audience or online. We'll start with everyone in the room here. If you have a parcel that you have signed up to speak on behalf, we ask that you come to the podium and talk about your particular parcel. With that, Dee, do we have anyone? Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Item 23.
Okay, item 23 is the next. Okay, yes, please.
My name is Devonte Saunders. I was hoping to purchase lots on Prairie, 1902 to 1918. I was wondering if you guys had any questions today in regards to that?
No, we do not.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Okay, Dee.
Who's the speaker?
If you could introduce yourself and let us know.
Hello, my name is Antoine Ayers. I represent, I'm sorry. I am America Vista, representing Cornerstone Development Review Committee for the West End Visitation Park Community. And we are asking for the seven and eight of Ward 10, those who development proposals to be deferred because they have not come before the Development Review Committee of the West End Visitation Port Community. Resident, I'm sorry, sorry, the Visitation at West End Park Community.
Okay. They've been invited, or have they tried to?
We haven't, they have not been before them.
Okay.
And because of the plan that we have, the implementation, resident land plan, that we request that all developers that are willing to develop in that community, they come before the DRC.
Okay, all right. So have they been made aware of that request to come before?
Typically, how it works, because we have the plan and in the plan with SLDC typically, they are, what we were told, what the DRC has been told is that they are advised when they come to do the proposal that they are redirected to go before the DRC.
Very good, thank you. Okay, Dee, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, we have two online presentations. Okay, Jessica Brown.
Hello, good morning.
Which parcel are we speaking on?
Um, we're talking about the parcels that are located on 4019, 4021, 4017, and I believe 4023 Newstead.
That's not it, what number is it?
The address is 4017, 4019, 29.
29, yeah.
I'm looking at 29, okay, okay. So these are the properties on North Newstead, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you are Jessica Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Yes, today I would like to make a statement regarding the support that I have been given from Ms. Everett and other board members to move forward with my project to create a community garden and off-street parking on those lots. I am a property owner in that area, and I have grown up in that area. And I am vested in the upkeep and uprising of that community. And I am really hoping today you guys will allow me to move forward with my plans and we can get things going and make the area better.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Brown. Okay.
Next person is Claire Green.
And what number do we know? Okay, Ms. Green, could you tell us the number, the item that you are speaking on today?
So yeah, my name is actually Mark Waterman. I'm on a, I'm on Claire Green Zoom account, but I can't figure out how to change it. So I'm, I'm the, I'm the one who put it in the offer to purchase 3729 and 3733 Tennessee.
Okay, do you know what item number that is?
Uh, I believe it's, let me check here. Item 26.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so my name is Mark. I'm, I've held a garden lease on these two properties since 2021, when myself, along with family, neighbors, friends, began building a community farm and food forest on the two properties. With help from a grant from MSD for rainwater catchment, we built several berms and installed a small orchard. And over the past three years, we've continued to expand the garden, install perennial plants, more fruit trees, lots of berries and flowers. So it's a community farm. We like to think of it a little bit differently than your classic community garden where people have their own individually controlled plots. We just, we plant large amounts of flowers and fruit and food and in more of a farm-style growing setting. And then neighbors are just invited to help themselves. So there's no fence, there's no, no limit on anyone can harvest from anywhere on the, on the farm. And yeah, we, this year, we're also given another grant through the USDA for installing more berries and fruit trees. And as part of that process, I, we, we were seeking approval from the LRA to proceed with this grant. And since the, we found out that the LRA is discontinuing the garden lease program, we were encouraged to go ahead and put it in an offer to purchase the lots. So myself, as the leaseholder, I, I'm, I'm placing this offer to purchase the lots, to continue to use them as a community growing space. And I appreciate your consideration. And I'm, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, are there any more?
One more, LaHed.
Okay, we have another speaker, LaHed. If you could let us know the item number.
Item number 57, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, perfect, number 57.
Okay.
Okay, just a little bit about myself. This is the first time partaking in the LRA program. I have 12 years of residential construction experience. I am a St. Louis native. And right now, currently, you know, my experience, I redevelop land for, you know, thousands of residential developments. So this is right up my alley, this is what I do. And I manage between Florida and Missouri. So that's, that's kind of what I do now. So just wanted to put a voice to the offer and just so that, you know, if you guys had any questions about the schedule submitted and funding, financing, which is all personal funding, just wanted to get on here and kind of say something.
Okay.
That's all for me.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. If there are no other, okay, if there are no other presentations, we will continue with our agenda. So at this point, we will now start to consider the offers to purchase. So under the offers to purchase are parcels owned by LRA that consist of unoccupied ground or physical structures. The offers have submitted offers to purchase with the intention of rehabbing properties as residential or commercial, commercial projects, an extension of their yard space, community gardens, or green spaces to enhance and beautify the community. The first section under this category of offers to purchase is new construction. And under the new construction program, these are Class A lots with a minimum of 4,000 square feet of total land with no more than three contiguous lots per offer. Our first offer is Chiquita Harden, purchasing, offer to purchase 3523 University and 3519 University. I move to reject this offer due to insufficient proof of financial resources to support the project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. I'd like to call for the vote.
Commissioner Arnold?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Hikes?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And everyone has voted, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number two, Brownstone to Brick LLC, property address 2255 California. I move to counter offer with a 24-month option for $17,500 with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item three, Devon Blair, property address 3914 South Broadway. I move to counter offer for a 24-month option for $22,560 with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Previous role, hearing no, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. For, item four, Fourth Ambrose Investment, Inc., care of Ambrose Brooks. Property addresses 4779 Plover Avenue and 4773 Plover Avenue. I move to reject offer due to insufficient proof of financial resources to support project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item five, Jerome C. Tony. Property address, addresses, we have 4005 Cook Avenue, 4007 Cook Avenue, 4009 Cook Avenue. I move to counter the offer for a 24-month option for $8,000 with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number six, we have multiple offers submitted by Tabernacle Memorial Church for properties on Hamilton and one on Dr. Martin Luther King. I move to counter the offer for a 24-month option for $3,500 with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of as-is rehab program. These are Class A residential buildings with up to six units, no more than one building with no more than two contiguous lots or one commercial building. Here we have two properties on Horton. Item number seven, 6052 Horton Place, presented by Daniel MBA. I move to defer any action on this particular property until we have heard for community input and support prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Also, we have item number eight, 6052 Horton Place, presented by Sidney Mitchell Advisor. I move to defer any action on this particular parcel until we have community input and support from the community. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number nine, property address 3928 California. I move to accept offer of $1,000 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item 10, property address 2216 Montana. Offer, Darrell K. Howard, move to accept offer of $1,000 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item 11, property address 4022 California. Offer Massma LLC, care of Andrea Borns, move to accept a two-month option of $1,000 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item 12, property address 8984 Edna, Edna Street. Offer Jose Ormando Martinez and Ma Ja Gonzalez. I move to defer action on this particular property due to condition of property and investigation of the property's condition. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item 13, offer Jacqueline Juanita Madison, property address 4141 St. Ferdinand, move to accept offer of $1,700 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Next, we have property, multiple properties on Ruskin, 5417 Ruskin, 5419 Ruskin, and 5411 Ruskin. Offer is Bob Young, move to accept offer of $3,000 with closing contingent upon plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item 15, we have offer Cross, Crossland Services LLC, care of Ricardo Crossland, move to accept offer of $1,000 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category is item under development. In development, these are offers for parcels owned by LRA that consist of physical structures, single-family residence, side lots, two-family, four-family, et cetera, for rehab and/or construction of any combination of the following: rehab and/or construction of mixed-use buildings, rehab and/or construction of multiple residential buildings, rehab of residential buildings with more than six units. The first property we have in this category, item number 16, offer Principal Energy Partners, care of Shante Clay. Multiple properties on Cassous, 4047 Cassous, 4043 Cassous, and 4037 Cassous. Move to counter with a 24-month option for $3,100, I'm sorry, $3,991 with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of general lot program, purchase program. The general lot purchase program provides guidelines for the sale of LRA vacant lots for any purpose other than new construction, build and rehab, or development. The first property we have in this category is item number 17, property address 4109 Sacramento. Offer Corey Standback, move to counter offer for $1,00911 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item 18, property address 4236 Blair. Offer Shanique Little, move to accept offer of $600 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number 19, property address 5210 Page. We have the offers Lawrence Johnson and Emma Stroud. Move to counter offer for $3,047 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item 20, property address 4144 Carter Avenue. I'd like to have a motion, a move to accept offer of $2,263 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. All right, item number 21, offer Donna Jackson and Bernicia Jose Jackson. Property addresses 3045 Marnes and 3047 Marnes, move to reject offer due to not being the highest and best use of the parcel. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item twenty-two, offer Hannah Holmes LLC. Care of Tanya Hannah. Property addresses forty-seven fifteen McMillan, forty-seven, forty-seven seventeen McMillan. And forty-seven twenty-one Matt Millen. Move to reject offer due to insufficient proof of financial capacity. To support the project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty-three, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer Devonte Saunders, move to accept offer of thirty-five hundred. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next property, item number twenty-four. Property address forty-five eighty Saint Louis Avenue, offer William Stevenson. Move to counter offer for seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Next property, twenty-five, property address fifty-one thirty-nine Wells Avenue. Offer Wells LLC care of Scott Campus. A move to counter offer for three thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries.
Excuse me, let her finish talking, please. Which item number?
Hello, I'm Scott Campus. I've been living at the house. You want me to do anything else to introduce myself? So I've been living at this house with the co-owner Jacob Crawford on behalf of the Wells LLC, which exists just as. An entity so that unrelated persons can own the property. This is at fifty-one forty-three Wells. So this is an adjacent lot that we've been maintaining at our cost since two thousand fifteen, replacing the fence. Cutting the grass, there's a tree that has been on the forestry department and LRA. Test tickets for removal for years that we've been calling in to request removal for. Because it's going to fall onto the alley behind, taking out the power line. There's a estimate of five thousand dollars and up. The lowest estimate I could get was five thousand dollars for this removal. So I believe that taking this on myself would justify the reduction. To the my offer of nine hundred or nine fifty, which was the assessed value. It's also similar to the what has, to what has been accepted for lots in the area in recent years and in that area. It's in a dilapidated area. There's been no development in this area for many years, certainly not in the ten years with that we have been there. There's collapsed buildings, the adjacent building is about to collapse, the back wall collapsed, it's an LRA-owned duplex. There's burned-out buildings down that way as well. I can get community support. I know that was not required. But that is something that I could bring forth, including the block captain and various neighbors on this block. So I've been beautifying this lot as well as other removing brush and whatnot. The entire block basically in the alley and adjacent areas, which I could verify with neighbors and the block captain. So I ask that my original offer of nine fifty be considered or. Some kind of reduction be on the counter offer that was going to be proffered, considering all these factors.
On item number twenty-five, David. I'd like to withdraw and then make another motion.
You can, you can do that as the mover or voting in favor of the majority, with the majority. So yes, you're welcome to do that.
Okay. Okay, okay, no, we're fine. All right. So what we're going to do, we're gonna make another motion. We withdraw the offer. And we're going to, we move to defer because we need to talk about this. We, we move to defer any action on this offer for further consideration. So we will withdraw our motion and then we're gonna make another motion to defer any action today. On this particular offer for further consideration. And we'll come back at the next meeting. Okay. So with that, that is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twenty-six, we have Mark, I'm sorry, am I? Item twenty-six, we have Mark Waterman, property address. Multiple addresses on Tennessee thirty-seven thirty-three Tennessee thirty-seven twenty-nine. Tennessee. Move to accept offer of two thousand dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twenty-seven, property address. We have multiple properties on page fifty-six forty-five Page Boulevard. And fifty-six forty-three Page Boulevard, offer is Christina Roberts. Move to counter offer for one thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. So, do we need to? Yeah, and I also like to add that parcels to existing options. That's located at fifty-six fifty-one page. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item twenty-eight, we have multiple properties. Fifty-three seventeen Claxton Avenue, fifty-three eleven Claxton Avenue. And fifty-three oh nine Claxton Avenue, offer is Bob Young. Move to counter offer for two thousand and twenty-six dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty-nine, we have multiple properties listed. On, in a forty thousand block of Newstead. Offer is Jessica Brown, I move to counter offer for two thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirty, we have. A offer here. Let's see here, okay. We have offer at fifteen eighteen Rear South Ten Street. Offer is BBRY Investments LLC. Offer Rick Yackey, move to accept offer of twenty-five thousand dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number thirty-one, we are under the side lot program. These are parcels owned by LRA that consist of unoccupied ground. That's too small to support new construction. These non-buildable lots are parcels that are less than four thousand square feet. And cannot be contiguous to another LRA parcel. These lots are made available and affordable to adjacent property owners to be used as a side lot. And expand personal property. First item in this category thirty-one, we have fifty-three eighteen Lotus Avenue. Camilla and Henry Cozy, move to accept offer of a hundred dollars for the side lot. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item thirty-two, property address thirty-six thirty-three South Compton. Charity and Bradley Stone, move to accept offer of a hundred dollars for side lot. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirty-three, property address forty-seven seventy-six Northland Avenue. Offer Ronald Washington, move to accept offer of a hundred dollars for side lot. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of option renewal. Option renewals are offers. Request for additional time to complete projects due to the construction delays, funding, etc. Or that the option is near an expiration. Offers must display proof of consistent progress to receive renewals. Of options and extensions of time. The first property we have in this category, multiple properties that are listed in exhibit A. The offer is N-Jobs Property LLC. Move to accept option renewal. For a twelve-month option of six thousand dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Our next property under this category, we have item number thirty-five. We have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer is Two D Green Investments LLC, care of Doug Lawrence. Move to accept twenty-four month option of sixty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of Prop NS stabilized buildings. The Prop NS program is a strategic initiative with a goal of stabilizing vacant residential buildings. Owned by the City of Saint Louis Land Realization Authority, which offers them for sale. The program was established by a community-initiated and voter-approved ordinance. To create a dedicated source of funding to make it possible for LRA to improve properties within the city's land bank. Of vacant buildings. This investment is intended to increase the likelihood that these properties will be purchased by private properties. Private parties who will then finish their rehab and transform current deteriorating buildings. Into decent housing for their communities. Okay, so in this first section, item, first property we have in this category. Is twelve fifteen North Euclid, we have multiple offers. For item number thirty-six, we have actually two offers. And in considering these offers, I move that we. Accept offer B Melvin Carr the second. For a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. And reject offer A in favor of our offer B. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Thirty-seven, again, we have multiple offers for fifteen thirty-five Hogan. Offer A would be Brooks Quality Inspection LLC. And offer B Everold Mark McKee. Move that we accept offer A, Brooks Quality Inspection LLC. And reject offer B in favor of offer A. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Our next offer is item number thirty-eight. We have a property at twenty thirteen John. And I move that we accept offer of seven thousand dollars. From Sanam Pujee. Acceptance of seven thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second? It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number thirty-nine, property address twenty twenty-one John. We have an offer Revitalization Real Estate Developers LLC. Move that we accept offer of thirty-five hundred. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second? It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty, property address twenty thirty John. We have an offer Felicia M. Shannon and Stephanie Fingers. Move to accept offer of five hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. We have on item forty-one. Property address thirty eighteen North Taylor. Offer Revitalization Real Estate Developers. Move to reject offer due to their approval of another offer. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number forty-two, property address thirty-five oh nine Harper. We have multiple offers there, however, I move to reject. We have multiple offers for thirty-five oh nine Harper. We have. We have, um, Son Sanam, uh, Puji, A. Uh, Revitalization Real Estate Developers, uh, on B, C, we have Society. Of the Most Holy Trinity and D, uh, Metab. Uh, Rashidi, I'm sorry, I messed up this name. Um, that is Metab or Hashdi, I'm just gonna give up on that, but. Okay, Rashidi, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we move to accept, uh, item D. Uh, Mahat, Mahat, Rashidi. Okay, thank you very much. Acceptance of twenty-five hundred dollars was closing contingent upon. Approval of budget and financing and we will reject, uh, the other offers in favor of this offer. Um, hearing, excuse me, yeah, they were approved, others were approved for other offers and. And we're accepting this one. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so it's been, uh, moved and second, uh, previous role as a vote, hearing no. Objection, motion carries and sorry about butchering your name, so, so, okay. Um, item number forty-three, uh, we have a property address. Thirty-seven thirty-seven Oregon. And again, we have multiple offers for thirty-seven, uh, thirty-seven Oregon. We have A, uh, I'm gonna mess this up again. Gare, Garet Singh, um, it's A, B, Society. Uh, Most Holy Trinity, uh, we have C, Brittany Hubbard. Uh, Zach Casman and D Mesma LLC. Uh, we are going to, uh, accept, I make a motion to accept offer C. Uh, of three thousand one hundred dollars with closing contingent upon. Approval of budget and financing and rejecting, uh, the A, B. And D, uh, in favor of another offer, okay? Uh, we have, uh, item number, okay, I'm sorry, do you have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. All right. Commit this here, okay. All right, so, uh, item number forty-four, we have thirty-seven thirty-seven H. Oregon and we have again multiple offers, Garet Singh. Um, and we have Brittany Hubbard and we have Manas LLC. Um, I move that we reject, uh, A and C in favor of another offer. And accept, um, offer B. Brittany Hubbard, acceptance of three thousand one hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number forty-five. All right, uh, we have two offers here, uh, forty-two thirty-six Wes Cook. Um, move to reject A. Um, as they were approved for another offer and reject B. Uh, for lack of sufficient proof of financial, uh, capacities to support project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Forty-six. Again, we have multiple offers for forty-two sixty-four Blair Avenue. Uh, we have offer A. Musa A Wilson and Erica Reed, B, Catrelle Moore. Uh, C, Society of Most Holy Trinity, um, care of Augustine Alu. And we have, uh, D. D is Ashley Cooksey and we have Jason Scott Bushby. And I move that we accept, uh, item A. Uh, Musa A Wilson and Erica Reed, except for six thousand dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing and reject. B, C, D and F in favor of another offer. I'm sorry, what did I say? I'm sorry. B, C, D and E, I do know my alphabets, all right, all right, in favor of another offer, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. All right. Item forty-seven. Property address forty-two sixty-seven Farland, we have two offers. Uh, Society A, Society of Most Holy Trinity and we have, uh, Mish Tab. Rashadi, uh, move that, uh, we reject, uh, item A. Uh, due to lack of financial capacity to support project and reject. B due to approval of another offer, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. All right, item number forty-eight. We have a forty-eight, we're good on that, okay. Forty-eight, uh, property address forty-five thirty-two Davidson. Uh, offer is James Bell, move to accept offer of six hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval. Of budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item forty-nine, property address forty-five thirty-seven Maffet, have multiple. Properties, uh, multiple offers, offer A. Uh, L M Green Properties LLC and offer B, J H P Residential Services. Move to accept item B, uh, J H P Residential Services for five hundred dollars with closing. Contingent upon approval of budget and financing and reject, uh, item A as they were approved for another offer. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifty, property address forty-five forty-nine Outcut. Uh, move to, uh, reject offer, uh, for Felicia. M. Shannon and Stephanie Fingers as they were approved for another offer, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Fifty-one, property address forty-six oh five MacMillan. Move to reject offer, offer submitted by Society of the Most Holy Trinity. Due to, uh, lack of proof of sufficient financial resources to support the project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item fifty-two, property address forty-six forty-nine Maffet. Uh, we have two offers, uh, item A. L M Green Properties LLC and item B, Felicia M. Shannon and Stephanie Fingers. Move to accept offer A, L M Green Properties LLC for five hundred and fifty dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing and reject, uh, for B. As they were approved for another offer, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifty-three, property address forty-seven twenty-five MacMillan. We have two offers, offer A, uh, Revitalization Real Estate Developers LLC. And offer B, Hannah Holmes LLC. Move to reject item A as they were approved for another offer. And reject item B due to, uh, lack of proof of financial resources to support project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries fifty-four. Property address forty-seven twenty-seven MacMillan. We have multiple offers here, A and B. Move, uh, offer A, David Wise, move to reject as. Uh, David Wise approved for another offer, um, offer B. Uh, move to, again, at the same, uh, motion to reject that offer. Uh, due to the re, uh, lack of financial capacity to support project, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item fifty-five, property address forty-seven twenty-nine Labity. Offer Vivant Blue Realty LLC, move to accept offer of five thousand dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifty-six, property address forty-seven thirty-four. Two offers, Charlisse Burton and Desharia. And item B, Desharia and Daniel Jefferson, move to reject. Item A and B due to lack of proof of financial resources to support project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifty-seven, property address forty-seven forty-eight Genovese. Move to accept offer from Lahad Israel. Uh, of seven hundred and fifty dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifty-eight, property address forty-seven fifty-eight Maffet. Move to, and this is offer by Revitalization Real Estate Developers LLC. Uh, move to reject, um, offer as offer was approved for another property, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifty-nine, property address, uh, forty-eight twenty-two Labity. Uh, offer, uh, Joshua, Tavia Crawford. Move to, uh, reject offer in favor of another offer. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item sixty, property address forty-nine twenty page, uh, offer Sherman. Golden and James Johnson. Uh, move to reject offer due to non-payment of city-owned real estate taxes, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Uh, sixty-one, we have multiple offers. Property address is fifty thirty-eight Maple. Um, offer A, Garet Singh and B, Sierra, LaShelle Williams. Move to accept offer A, Garet Singh and. Um, it was accept offer eight, uh, A of eight thousand dollars with posing contingent upon approval. Budget and financing and reject offer B for in favor of another offer. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item sixty-two. Property address fifty sixty-nine Genovese. Offer Ifany. Maximus Arens, uh, move to accept offer of. One thousand two hundred and twenty dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item sixty-three, property address fifty seventy-six Kates. Multiple offers, uh, offer A is Sanam Puji. And offer B, Shalanda Whitfield. Move to accept offer B, Shalanda Whitfield. For one thousand one hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. And reject offer A in favor of another offer, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item sixty-four, property address fifty-one fifty-eight Minerva. Move to and offer is offer A, uh, again, this is multiple offers. Uh, and with this, um, like to, uh, make the motion. That we, uh, reject A, uh, Garet Singh. Um, as Garet Singh was approved for another property and, uh, reject B. Sierra LaShelle, uh, Williams due to lack of proof of financial resources to support the project. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Oh, my goodness, oh, sorry about that, and C. Uh, so, just kinda take that back for a minute, all right, so, uh, there's multiple offers, there's A, B and C. And, uh, the motion is to reject A. Uh, for approval of another offer, reject B, uh, for financial resources and then reject. C as it was approved for another, uh, piece of property. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Okay, uh, item sixty-five, property address is fifty-nine forty-three Hamilton Heights. And we have multiple offers here. Um, offer A, uh, Vibrant Blue Realty LLC. And, uh, B, Shalanda Whitfield, move to accept, uh, offer. Uh, Vibrant Blue Realty LLC, acceptance of six thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
And we will reject item B, um, as for another property. Um, do, I, so we have a, it's been motion in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item sixty-six, uh, property address fifty-four fifty-nine Genovese. Uh, we have offer, uh, Vibrant Blue Realty. And, uh, move to reject offer as a. And, uh, move to reject offer as they have been approved for another property. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of donations. Donations or parcels which consist of unoccupied ground or structures owned by constituents who desire to donate due to no longer wanting the property or they are incapable of maintaining the upkeep. The donation, the donation is entered into the L R A inventory and sold using the L R A process. Uh, we have two properties in this category. Um, item twenty sixty-seven, property address twenty-six eighteen Prairie Avenue. Uh, the person donating is Gregory Taylor. Move that we accept this donation, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Sixty-eight, property address forty forty-nine Maffet. Yeah, the donator is Unparallel Lodging LLC. Uh, move that we accept this donation, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of miscellaneous. Miscellaneous items are requested changes from the original approved board decision. These may include a change of end use, name change, et cetera. The request must go before the board for consideration. First property we have in this category is item number sixty-nine, uh, for an acquisition of a temporary easement. Um, at twelve seventy-five Goodfellow, uh, from Amaran, Missouri. Uh, move that we accept, uh, that temporary easement. So, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Uh, next item we have is item seventy, uh, acquisition of a temporary construction easement request uh, by Green Rivers Greenway, uh, move that we accept uh, the acquisition of temporary construction easement.
Can you, can I make an observation that I believe it's Great Rivers Greenway?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right.
What the agenda says, but that's a mistake.
Yes, Great Rivers Greenway, sorry about that.
That Green River is great.
Yeah, okay. Correct, okay. Okay, so move that we accept the acquisition of temporary construction easement from Great Rivers Greenway. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role is to vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Alright, um, the next item that we have here is from Kiara Burton. Uh, multiple properties and, uh, forty-one fifteen West Penn Road Street and forty-one seventeen West Penn Road Street. And move that we counter the offer for one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Okay, item number seventy-two, under the heading of deferral. We have property address eighty-three sixty-two Hall's Ferry Road. Offer is fully worn, uh, move to counter the offer for three thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Our next property, uh, there are multiple properties that are listed, um, in exhibit A. Move to accept offer of twelve thousand dollars for a twelve-month option with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item seventy-four, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer is a seri- is series of J acquisitions. Here of DeLacy Robinson, move to reject, uh, the offer due to, uh, lack of proof of financial, uh, resources to support the project, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item seventy-five, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Uh, offer is Frontier Petro LLC. Um, move to defer, uh, action on this, these, these parcels for further consideration, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as, um, previous role is to vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Uh, seventy-six, uh, same offer, uh, multiple properties on West Bell, uh, listed in exhibit A. Move to defer any action on these parcels for further consideration, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Seventy-seven. We have property address fifteen eighteen Rear South Tenth Street. Offer Stephen Howard Hinch, uh, move to reject offer uh, in favor of another offer, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. We have item number seventy-eight, uh, there are multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer is We Dream Inc., care of Veronica Smith. Move to defer any action on these parcels, pending review of community input and support prior to the commission making a decision, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number seventy-nine, we have offer Pamper Me LLC, care of Terilyn Clardy. Uh, two properties, forty-six thirty-two Sacramento and forty-six thirty Sacramento. Move to reject offer due to, uh, lack of proof of financial resources to support the project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries, item eighty. Offer, uh, Income Housing LLC. Uh, mul- two properties, one at eighty-four twenty-two Lowell Street and the other at forty-four seventy-eight Pinrose. Move to reject offer due to lack of, uh, proof of sufficient resources to support the project, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Okay. Item eighty-one, um, we have multiple properties uh, listed here. Hold on a second. Item. Yeah. Okay, item number eighty-one, we have multiple properties listed, um, in exhibit A. Uh, offer Demetrius, Demetrius Jones, a move that we accept offer of a thousand dollars going to the appointing authority, uh, contingent upon, uh, budget plans and financing. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Um, item number eighty-two, we have multiple properties there. Um, property address forty forty-six CoBrilliant and forty forty-eight CoBrilliant. Move to accept offer of one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars with closing contingent upon approv- approval of budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item eighty-three. Um, we have property address forty-three sixty-four Maffet Avenue. Offer Red, Red Line Transit Express LLC, care of Shirley Moore. We have here a counter, let's see here. One second. We have a counter for uh, two thousand twenty-seven dollars for a twenty-four month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
Um, like to call for the vote.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner Height?
Yes.
Okay, um, with that, um, a majority, we have that commission, um, that carries, a motion carries. Um, so, we'll move on. Um, so that is a counter for twenty-four hun- uh, two thousand twenty-seven dollars for a twenty-four month option, motion carries. Um, item number eighty-four. We have twenty-two fifty-five California Avenue, offer Justin Beetle. Move to reject offer in favor of another offer, could we call for the vote?
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Height?
Yes.
It's been moved in second, previous role, okay, moved in second and majority, uh, motion carries. Okay, so, that is what we have. Um, that concludes our presentation of offers. And with that, um, today I don't see any resolutions. We can move on to the director's report?
Yes.
Do you have a report, Director?
Uh, no brief report, uh, Commissioner, but just to extend thanks to, uh, certainly the L R A staff for their work uh, this month, as you see with the agenda, we have several offers, uh, almost a hundred offers that has been presented before the commission, so, thank you to the staff for the review and the time and the effort and the consciousness as well as the support of the commissioners, uh, in helping us in our mission and vision. And also thankful for the community, uh, and the offers that have been presented, uh, as they also support the collective goal in getting properties back into productive use, so, just extending thanks and no further report.
Okay, turn it over to our chair.
Next board meeting would be September twenty-fifth, and now the meeting is adjourned.
Second. This was moved in second, all those in favor?
Yeah.
There's no objection, meeting is adjourned.